Except going to call on you first every time now.
Oh.
That's great. Thank you so much. That's what you get for being an exceptional person. Okay, um, let me see, who wants to go next? Remi, you're the next one on my screen.
Perfect. I was hoping you would call on me next. I'm good at following a strong lead. So, and the short answer is, I ran for city council because I wanted to see improvements out at our airport. I saw a lot of potential for our business community, for our residents, and for what at the time was a blossoming tourist economy, much, much different, really, in the last five years even than it is now. The other reason is that it was a natural progression. I had completed two terms on the McMinnville Planning Commission, which were both two-year terms. So I'd been in service for four years and was ready to step up. Those are the short answers. The more in-depth or philosophical part that you're looking, or that I think you were seeking here, I'm going to summarize. You're not gonna be able to type. Well, I don't know what your typing skills are. But there, but there, I always think it's good to let somebody else say it if they've already said it better. And so perhaps I don't need to read the entire thing. But for those of you that are familiar with Theodore Roosevelt's quote, "The man in the arena", that was something that always really spoke to me. It talks about striving valiantly and being willing to err and being willing to come up short. But that you continue to go on and make the effort over and over. And that by striving, by striving to do great deeds, essentially, ultimately, you will. It's a really beautiful quote. And I encourage everybody to look it up and read the entire thing. And then as I spent more time in public service and felt as though I was really living that Theodore Roosevelt quote when it came to some heavy criticism for work that I was and continue to try to do, especially in regards to homelessness and the unhoused, as my focus shifted quickly after I joined the city council and was very responsive to the need of the city. I will say that there's one other quote that is, that's something that I, I hope this doesn't sound in any way self-aggrandizing, but this would be what I strive for, would be the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who said, "We need leaders not in love with money, but in love with justice; not in love with publicity, but in love with humanity." And I think especially through my work with the unhoused population over the last many years, I feel like I have become more and more in love with humanity. And so that's my why.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. You're right, I lagged a little bit at the end, but I wanna get the rest of that quote. Love with humanity. Awesome. Okay, Kelly, you wanna go next? Council, I'm sorry. Councillor Manke?
Sure, what the heck? When I gave consideration to coming on the city council, you know, keeping in mind this is 17 years ago. I'd just spent five years on the Budget Committee. And I was seeing issues coming up with financing. We were short police staff. And they actually came and talked to us very sincerely about the situation at one of the budget sessions. Obviously, there was gonna be some transportation issues coming up. And so I thought, you know, since I had an accounting background and stuff, that maybe I could be helpful on the city council. And I was encouraged by several councillors and the mayor to go ahead and run and the city manager. Many things have happened over the last two years. Initially, I was really involved in the accounting department and some changes that we made there. And then the Audit Committee and things like that. But as we went along, I became more aware that it was, there was a need to step up, particularly when we changed city managers and it became quite a significant event. And we had to make some changes. And it was a difficult decision, but I felt strongly about the way we ended up going. And then I noticed that the older councillors were falling away. I mean, most of these people were, you know, my age or older. And I thought at the time, you know, we really do need a breath of fresh air. Let's try some younger councillors. And, you know, Remi was the first one I really wanted to see get on the council. And then Adam stepped up. So, you know, I think what I really look for is kind of a collegial type of atmosphere, but I don't know that that's necessarily what we are gonna expect in this situation. I do always appreciate new ideas and new thoughts. And it's been an ongoing stimulating event for me. So I, I love what we're doing. It's just, sometimes it's a little difficult for me to make these transitions.
That's great. Thank you. To make transition. Great. Okay, councillor Chenoweth? Wanna, our newest councillor, do you wanna step up and say a little something to us about why you joined the council?
Well, not particularly. But I don't think that's an option.
There is no detail, though.
Mayor, could you step in and detail with us?
Maybe I should have rephrased that.
And I thought I was supposed to do one sentence based on the instructions.
That's fine.
Looks like we're going a lot more than one sentence. So, so the why did I run? Well, you know, for me, I ran first. You know, the last 20 years of living in McMinnville, I've devoted my life to service at my local church, reaching out in bus ministry to underprivileged children throughout the city. And, you know, driving a bus around basically through one-third of McMinnville, well, a little more than one-third of McMinnville, the same route over 20 years. And, you know, that kinda gave me a heart already for humanity, for trying to help people, trying to reach out to them and encourage them and make their standing better. And I reached a couple of transitions in life. One was a transition out of roles that I was doing at the church. The second was a transition in that I had my first grandchild born. And that birth of my first grandchild made me realize that I was looking at a city that I loved and what was I leaving for him, his grandson? And what had I done to make this community better? Much like Remi said with the Theodore Roosevelt quote, you know, I felt like it was my time to stand up and do something to help the community that I basically was raised in and grew up in. I wasn't born here, but came here when I was 12. I saw some issues within the city. I won't hash through those, but that I felt like I had some expertise to help with. And I felt like it's easy to complain. It's, it's easy to point your finger and demand others do better. It's hard to put yourself into the position and try to do it yourself. And I'm not one that wants to just be a complainer. I'm one that wants to take action and help. So the why was to help people. The why was to try to leave something better for my grandchild and children and everybody else's as well, not just mine. It wasn't all about me, but that was kind of what made me think about it. And to offer some assistance where I could. I don't have any good pithy quotes that I can bring to you. But anyways, I think that would be the why.
Awesome. Thank you so much, councillor Chenoweth. Councillor Garvin, would you like to go next? Yeah, now you have a quote. Councillor Garvin, would you like to go next? I saw him come in. Maybe we'll go to Scott. Or councillor Peralta. Who haven't, don't have.
Thanks, Wendy. Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I had a lot of the same reasons that other people gave. I got into public service. Well, I mean, I think, as I mentioned, when I applied to serve on the city council, for pretty much my whole life, I've been interested in, in the law and interested in policymaking. But when my daughter was born in 2006, that's when I really kind of committed to getting serious about public service. And my decision to apply to serve on city council is simply that I feel like I have some expertise that I can lend to the body. Thanks.
Great, great. Okay, councillor Garvin, are you able to?
I didn't see him on the line, Wendy, as I scrolled through.
On the line, I couldn't, I couldn't get to my mute button earlier. Unloaded a toddler from a car seat. Yeah, so, so my why, you know, that started with me attending meetings back in 2013 just for a sole personal industry purpose. And then through that, gradually ramped up attendance and attended meetings for a number of years and learned kind of some inner workings of the city and where I felt some departments were underfunded and had spoke with some of those members of those departments over the years. And then we had the issue on the downtown area, you know, where there's kind of city versus churches, for lack of a better term, with the previous city manager. And I felt that, you know, I could bridge some gaps there. And then over about 2015, there's behavior issues downtown in the downtown core. And I felt that I could help bridge some gaps there as well. And then just the overall change I had seen throughout the city in my years after, after leaving high school and growing up here. And there's about a 10-year, 10-year gap there. And I'd considered running in 2014, when Remi ran. And it just wasn't the right timing for me personally. And then in 2016, after watching another two years of meetings, similar to Zach's reasoning, I just felt that there was kind of a gap in representation as far as the youth on the council and the perspective we bring of raising kids here and the fabric of the city for the next generation. And so instead of complaining about it on a keyboard, I felt it was either time to get involved or, you know, find something else to do with my time. And if I could make an impact, I felt that it was the right time to get involved for the betterment of the city, but more for the youth and the generations to come. So that's what got me involved in council.
Awesome. Thank you, councillor Garvin. Okay, I think, Mayor, you're the last one, right?
Thank you for the opportunity. As I thought about these questions, I think, I think back to my childhood of being raised by a father that had a philosophy of getting out and being involved and helping people. So I was raised with that philosophy. The other piece is as a banker, bankers, because communities support banks, bankers support the community. And I've had many, many, many years of supporting organizations throughout my banking career. But it was when I was asked to go on to the Budget Committee of the city of McMinnville, and that was 28 years ago, as I started to look at the finances, and I think I've shared this before, finances start to tell a story. And as I became more familiar with the story, it really dawned on me that I'm giving my time and energy to a lot of organizations, but the city of McMinnville, the place I live, where I raised my family, the place that I truly love, was the next direction. And so really what helped me was the familiarity of, of the finances and where the city was and the inner workings a little bit. And then being able to take that and move over to city council because I just wanted to give back. I think I'll end just with a little bit. You know, the higher purpose to me is that we, you know, it's all about policy procedure. We represent the citizens. We need to listen. We need to support the staff. But I'll tell you one other piece for me is this has been an ongoing education over the last 28 years that I have found extremely rewarding and satisfying is to learn with my peers on the council and hopefully delivering a better product that has vision and implementation that gets us to a higher level.
Awesome. Well, thank you, guys. This is awesome. We will process some of this. And one of the things that we're gonna look for is to brainstorm a why that we think will go across the whole council to be shared by the team. There's a lot of common threads in here. And it's also great for us to know each other. As many differences as we may have with regards to how we approach the individual specific topics that we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis on the dais, we see that the commonalities on a higher level, nobody decides to spend as much time as you guys spend without having huge hearts and a really noble purpose for being here. So thank you, guys, all for your service and also for taking the time to really think about this question. I really, I'm sure everybody really enjoyed hearing it. I certainly did. So any thoughts on that before we move to the next section of the meeting?
I do, Wendy, if you don't mind.
Hearing none. The next sec, oh, yeah, go ahead, Remi.
Thank you. I just wanna say I had the opportunity to talk to the council at the beginning of this year, after being elected council president. And I, and I had that similar question. I wanted to have a better understanding of why everybody ran. And I can tell you that there was a strong theme in those conversations, and that theme was service. Everybody here, despite their perspectives or how they approach life or what their filters or lenses are through which we're all viewing, viewing our lives, the, the thing that is always, that is consistent is a desire to be in service.
Awesome. Yes, councillor Peralta, did you wanna say something? Or see any other hands?
Well, Wendy, the common theme is service, not purpose.
Oh, consistent desire to be in service. Oh, what's service? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, those, those are two different states.
Very different words. Thank you for the catch, yes. That changes the whole meaning of the sentence. Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else before we go on to the next section? Great. This section, and we had action items that came away from our previous meeting, which was months and months ago. This will just be a practice of what we normally do when we have action items. In the future, the action items will be month to month. So it'll be easier for us to remember what our action items were, following up on them. Typically, we'll go down and we'll hear from the people, the owners of the action item to decide, to find out done or not done. If there's any discussion that needs to happen with regards to that, it would drop into the issues section. I doubt we will have that this meeting, but may in the future. Claudia, there was an action item for you out of the previous meeting to share the spreadsheet of what the staff has done to focus their work around the strategic plan. Do you wanna indicate done or not done on that one?
It's not done, and I'll get that sent out tomorrow morning.
Okay, we'll send tomorrow morning. The next one, complete the Vision Tracton Organizer. This is actually in process. The exercise you just did is another facet of that, and the goal setting is a facet of that. So see, you'll see more of that as we, as we progress in this process. Jeff, are you on the line with us? Create a strategic planning lens tool that we can, in a concise way, indicate whether it falls in line with the strategic plan or not.
I am here. I'm having a tough time turning my video back on. The button is hidden right now. Sorry about that.
Okay.
There we go.
Oh, there you go.
So did some draft work on that and submitted that to the EOS committee. It has, it has sort of lain in wait while we worked our way through most of the budget preparation and review process. So I'll pick that up again soon.
Great. So I'll keep it on there so that we can circle back on it next meeting. And Jeff, you also had a mechanism for regular bite-sized, it's a strategic plan process. This might be taken by Scorecard.
Yes, that's, that's the trick to the Scorecard issue.
Okay, and do you, is Kylie on line?
I am.
We had a, hi Kylie, how are you?
Hey, I'm good.
So out of the last Level 10 meeting, we had a dashboard on our website to show accomplishments to monitor progress. Has any action been taken on that? Do you want me to wrap this up?
Yeah, Scott, Amanda, Susan and I have met at least once. And Scott and Susan and I checked in today about this. So we, we haven't done it. There's a cost to those things. So we wanna continue evaluating that and see if there's a way to perhaps tie in strategic plan tracking with maybe financial tracking in a dashboard that way. So we're still evaluating how to get that done. Scott, feel free to jump in and tap into that, too.
Yeah, I think you just tied it up there in a nutshell, Kylie. For item three there as well, we've kind of formed a small internal team to look at products across the board, small products, big products, and that's exactly what we're talking about. So we should have some progress traction on that real soon.
Great. Thank you for the update, you guys. And this is same, PNC are tied together, so they both gave us an update on that, as I see above. And Jeff and Scott put the MacTown 2032 on the webpage to make it easily searchable. Any action on that?
Not, not changing what's already there. The, the main PDF is out there. We're looking into a few different things for the front page to make either an easy link or to break everything out there on the webpage and maybe even add some of the new branding as well, so. Also in progress.
Great. Awesome. Okay, so the next section is the main reason we're here, which is Issue Solving Track. Today, we're going to look at a proposed, oh, look, and my thing slipped down. And, and Mr. Mayor, if you want me to, to have you open up, I just wanted to say a couple of words about IDS in general to prepare us for our first IDS in a while. We've only had one other one. And I put in this graphic, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Patrick Mancioni's Five Dysfunctions of a Team, but these are the positive, the positive side of the five dysfunctions of a team. And one thing I will say in my experience using the tool of IDS is that it is a tool that, when used regularly, builds this pyramid for teams. So it just to be able to put an issue out there and be willing to talk about it is builds trust on the team because there's an understanding that the team will accept the issues that any member has to talk about. And there's, it builds a high level of trust to just even be putting it out there and being willing to have the conversation. We will be practicing constructive conflict during IDSs because I guarantee you, we'll all have different ideas. And so it's a way of building that muscle of being able to have constructive conflict where you can have different ideas and you can stay on the high topic tension without going into emotional reactions, which also builds trust. As every time you do that, you build trust in each other. And then commitment, when we come to the Solutions Track, we make commitments to accomplish things. We hold ourselves accountable to those actions that come out of that Solutions Track. And then we'll start to see results as we continuously work on that. So as in anything that is worth doing, I think what councillor Grabkin said is perfect for a setup for an issues solving track because it's hard, but it's worth it. And you might, we might get a little bit bloody. Not really, but figuratively. But the reality is we're gonna come out stronger as a result of it. So I'm really excited for, to start the process. And the last thing I'll say is that ordinary things done consistently produce extraordinary results. This is an ordinary thing that if we do it consistently, will produce extraordinary results for this team. So I'm super excited to get started. But Scott, why don't you, I'm gonna go back up to the issue that we're gonna be talking about today. And maybe you can introduce us on that issue.
Thank you, Wendy. Again, the whole purpose of us working on this process and spending as much time as we've done is to help us be a high-functioning team, a team that can add to the effectiveness of what we're doing here in the city and having a process of being able to do that as a unit, which would be the city council. And so we had a situation almost two months ago that arose. And I'll tell you right away that myself and Wendy and Chris have met. So we let Chris know that we were gonna use this concern as our first, what we call IDS of identify, discuss, and solving of issues, a process that we'll be using many, many times in the, in the near future as we get through to building that high-functioning team. But as, you know, Chris is a current city councillor, raised a concern about an aspect of the city functioning to a third party in a way that potentially reduced the trust within the team and did not empower the whole of the organization to address the concern in a positive way. And during this whole process, I think I've heard, I'd heard from every member of the city council of hitting that piece that talks a little bit that we didn't empower the whole of the organization as a city council. Thus, it took away from our high-functioning as a team. And I don't think there's any better way for us to do an IDS of really getting down to root causes and how we can move forward. Another piece that was a part of the homework is to, again, review the, our, our council operating agreements and how we treat one another. We've talked about that before. So with that being said, I'll turn it back over to Wendy to run us through the IDS session. I don't think we've had a full IDS the way they're intended to be. So this will be a real learning opportunity. I think we really kind of sit back and have the, the good, deep discussion that gets us to the root causes. So Wendy, with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Great. So this is not the, not necessarily the issue that this group will decide to solve or the only issue that this group will decide to solve. The advisory team came up, came up with, took a stab at putting something down. And so the first step in this process is identify. And I will, we'll probably spend a lot of time on that because there's probably more than one issue that we'll discover as we're unpacking what that experience was like for this team. And we'll then decide what we're gonna do with that. Once we feel like we've vetted any issue that is, was part of that experience, we'll then talk about which one. we'll then talk about which one we're going to IDS. So this may carry over to another meeting, depending on what happens in the issues in the identify track. So the floor is open for anyone to talk about what, what you think about this 911. Is this the, a clear encapsulation of an issue that we would like to IDS? Or unpack it and talk about things that it doesn't contain or ways that, or different facets of it?
Could we actually see everybody's box? I mean, I, I appreciate writing it down, but it'd be nice if whoever's exposing their faces to see their face.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chris for the other.
Kelly, would you like for me to not share a screen? Or is that better or just that people have their pictures on?
Yeah, if we're having an open discussion, it's probably better to be able to see one another if we expose our faces. I think we can always look at the notes you're taking after the fact because I think you'll be putting it on the, the Google Drive.
Okay.
Got enough distance between us, kind of nice to at least have some connection.
Sure, great. So I'm going to move you guys over so I can see, I can see my notes because I do need to see my notes. And then I'm going to make you guys big. Okay, so, so who wants to take a stab at, do we, do we like this issue? Are we going to go ahead and IDS this issue? Or are there, are there more facets to it? Do we think there's not an issue? That could be a conversation too.
Well, I, I, since my name is on this, I guess I probably should come out of the box and be the one first. So I guess I should first probably express where I'm coming from in that statement. So let me, let's, let's, let's get to the, let's deal with the content a little bit of the email before I get to the bigger point that I, that I think needs to be raised. So on, on the content side, I, I, to everybody who has not had a conversation with me on this topic, I regret the example that I used. And that's all I'm going to say on, on that. I, I shouldn't have used that example. And I will publicly state that the way that I worded it left the impression that the person involved chose a different location over our location. That is not accurate. He had already given up on this, on this location long before he started trying in there. And who knows whether he's going to succeed in Douglas County? So, you know, that's, that's, that's a whole nother topic of conversation that I don't want to go down that rabbit hole. But, so I want to clear those two points. The intent of that email was just to encourage a important constituency to me because I'm an owner of a small business to advocate on behalf of my small business. So beyond that, that, there was really no more intent to that email than that from my perspective. Anybody who received more than that, I'm sorry, but that was my intent. So that being said, since it came from my personal email based on a personal issue as a member of a chamber of commerce that I've been a member for, for 20 some odd years, I felt like I had an expectation that that was going to be kept there by all the members of that board, which is not relevant to us, but it is important part to this. I have one employee, I think all six of us have one employee in the city of McMinnville. That's Jeff Towery. And that, and he interfaces with everybody else on our behalf. If I had an employee in my private sector that did that to me, without question, he would be let go or at least severely reprimanded. It'd be done. I would, I wouldn't even mess around with it. Because I, I now can't trust that whatever I'm sending in correspondence is going to stay within our group to communicate with. I don't know where that thing's going to go. I've, I've ended conversations, points that I was having on a weekly basis because I don't know what communication is going to leave that room. For me, this is a major trust issue. And so that's the point of that statement up there. I would say the underlying issue that I see is we have to work at doing things in a way that build trust. And what really would have done that in this case is a phone call. Had I received a phone call from, from Jeff and he would have said to me, you know, hey, I got a problem with this, that and the other thing, I would have been more than happy to issue a correction. I didn't get that, I got kind of blindsided by what happened. I understand he probably felt kind of blindsided as well. So I, we have a real trust issue here that needs to be resolved based on my perception of what happened.
Could I ask a question, Chris? My recollection was that you signed it as a city councillor, am I correct on that?
No.
Your original letter?
No. It was signed Chris at Accu, it came from Chris@AccuPro-Oregon.com. And it was signed Chris Chenoweth AccuPro-Oregon, from, with my business signature at the bottom. This was a completely private email sent from my private email account.
Well, okay, one other comment. Whether you like it or not, you are a city councillor now. It doesn't matter. I, I mean, I do try and make that differentiation between myself and the city council role for particular reasons. Because when I speak as a councillor, I should be speaking for everybody and we've all agreed on something. But when people look at me, they think I'm a city councillor and what I say is coming as a city councillor. So you do need to have, make that differentiation, even though you might not have put that down. Number two, I know you didn't know the history of this, but it was pretty intense at the city. And it was very hurtful to the staff. So I just want you to kind of keep that in mind. You're going to be working with these people on a very close basis for at least four years. And it was very hurtful.
Oh, Kelly, you're saying the way it was received by my staff and within the city was very hurtful. The reduced trust and hurt feelings.
Yeah, it really had some very hurtful feelings to the staff. Keep in mind that Jeff has actually hired most of these people too.
Hey, Scott?
I'd agree with everything that Kelly said, and I understand where Chris is coming from. But there were some verbiage that you used in your explanation, Chris, that you would expect that the communication you had with the chamber was going to be held close at heart and, and that Jeff outstepped his bounds by sharing that. And you say that all that would have had to happen was a phone call and discussing that individually. I come back and I say, you know, the content of what you wrote to the chamber, all that could, you could have helped by contacting members of the council and sharing your, your concern. And we didn't even know about it. If it hadn't been for Jeff, we as a council in a city was put under the bus by a member of our group and we would never have known about it. And I think that's unfair because you're, you're putting another group over us as a councillor that you are a part of. And so I, for one, was very appreciative of Jeff letting the council know things that were happening without our knowledge were a phone call to Jeff or at least getting it out on the table that this is something I'm going to do. But it was like it was secretive and you were putting down the city, the, the city manager, the staff, the council. And so it was very hurtful. And as I took comments from every member of the council, every member of the council felt that way. And so again, it's this openness that you felt you had an ability to talk to the county, to the chamber that, that came out by surprise to you. Think of us as a council, what was said by you as a member of our group where we're trying to be high functioning and being able to be effective. So those were the feelings that I had personally. And, and I picked up from many, all of the councillors that I had an opportunity to talk to. And I talked to every single one on this topic.
Okay, go ahead, councillor.
One more thing. I, I guess you say Jeff should have called you, but I, I have to say, you know, since your concerns certainly involved him, maybe you should have gone and talked to him first, really.
Counselor Drabkin? Go ahead, councillor Drabkin.
Thanks. Well, Wendy, you started this by saying, is this something you want to talk about? And no, I don't think in a way it is. I understand why we're going through this exercise, that we're trying to achieve a positive outcome and not to let these things lie and have it become part of our foundational experience in which there would be less strength. I understand that is the intent. However, I'm not actually particularly fond of even productive conflict. I'm from our team building exercise recently, as most of us did. I'm a hub. I, I like to try to build unity and I like to try to find a way forward because I recognize that there is commonality in all of us, not just in the council, but throughout all of us, there's commonalities. Sometimes we just have to look harder to find it because the things that we don't agree upon jump to the forefront. So now that we're in this process, one, if we may, could we remove any, could we, could we no longer talk about content? Because I feel like the, the problem lies in the process. There are differing perspectives on, on the process here. So that would be my, my request.
I, I would say, I gotta push back a second if we're going to drop the content because everybody that has spoken other than you so far has said there was hurtful things in there that I was attacking the city. I've talked to a number of people at the Chamber of Commerce who received that email and none of them received it that way. I, I don't, I don't, I'm just telling you, they didn't, they didn't receive it as an attack on, on the city at all. So, you know, it, it's kind of perplexing to me since I didn't intend it that way. It was meant as a, you might want to mute your mic.
Yeah, councillor Peralta.
It's kind of perplexing to me since I intended it entirely just to be asking for advocacy, to, to even have this kind of response. And again, so I, I would push back a little bit on the content and the way it's being characterized.
Well, certainly I'm not trying to control our process here. I wasn't, you know, I'm not laying out the process and trying to participate in it in a way that continues to feel constructive. And so maybe I misspoke. Maybe the issue for me was the process. And, and maybe that's what I should have said, that for me, the issue was the process. And those issues, and I prefer to frame these not in, I'm actually going to remove, I, I don't like to point fingers here. So I don't want to say, Chris, this is, you know, what I want to say is when communications happen, that, that regard, the, the, when there is feedback that is, that councillors feel the need to share with one another, especially when, if it has to do with performance, performance of the council or performance of other councillors. I think that we have processes in place to do that. Another part of the process that was very bothersome for me was that, was that, and, and this can also come up in a lot of different avenues. So I, I hope you'll give me this allowance of taking this example and making it a little bit more expansive. But sometimes, this has been especially hard during COVID, the balance between over communication and under communication. Do people know what they need to know versus do, do people need, know enough? And I, and so I think that the, there was a tremendous amount of communication that came out of this particular incident. And the fact that it continued on, I, I felt like that was then also a push on the process that, that there would have been a better time to step back and then confer. And, you know, I hope that, I mean, I hope that the council feels comfortable and, well, I, I know that the council feels comfortable, historically has felt comfortable anyways in coming to me and talking to me about different issues or going to the mayor and talking to the mayor about different issues. And saying, you know, this is a, this is something that's coming up. And what's the right way to address this? And, and so I, I like to see that part of the process. And then the, the other thing, and, and this is just my personal, this is, but, but I do think it has to do with our working agreements is also that I, you know, I try not to, well, I generally don't, I don't think I really ever, I don't diminish other people publicly. I, I think that that's a bad call. I try not to do it privately either and rather try to figure out what my, my side of the street is and that. So the, there were a number of steps in the process. And I, I am taking this meeting where we are using this example. And Chris, you're kind of, you know, you, you're being put in the, the crosshairs of this example. But I am hoping that we are also, that, that, keeping in mind that there, that this is an example of a moment in time in which things were not functioning properly. It doesn't mean that at every other time, things are functioning properly. And that, that, you know, in different scenarios, different councillors don't have culpability. I think we all do. And, and so those are just some of my initial thoughts going into this. I, I really don't want this to become a, a finger pointing exercise. And Wendy, I know that's not your intent either. I would still want, and I, and I believe that we are only engaging in this exercise if we communally want there to be a better outcome than there has been so far. Thanks for the time.
Wendy?
Awesome.
Could I say one more thing? And goes along with what Remy's just said. I, I think the saddest thing about this is I, you know, you're a new councillor on the council. And I think, you know, without a session like this, it has the potential to damage your credibility in a way that probably shouldn't happen. I know that I myself have on occasion done some fairly nasty things, unfortunately, not meaning to, but I certainly did. And I probably owe councillor Peralta some apologies over it. But, you know, you gotta be aware. And so maybe it's a good thing to just kind of discuss this in the ramifications of it. So you really do understand. And we all understand because we'd like you to be a part of us, totally.
I think, I think one of the things I, that is really good point that maybe we should pause on for a moment, what Remy was talking about is that the weakness that was, that what, the weaknesses in the team enabled for this to happen. Right? So it's not just Chris. There are, there's, we're vulnerable to behaviors that don't follow a process and don't build a culture unless we're proactively building that culture and setting those expectations. Like councillor Chenoweth said, in his mind, he had a different idea about what was acceptable and what was an acceptable way for him to express a concern about something that he was concerned about. This body needs to be proactively establishing ahead of anything like this that comes up. We're all passionate about the city of McMinnville, all right? So having channels and ways that this body addresses those things is, it's, to councillor Drabkin's point, this is not about Chris, this is about this body. this is about this body and bringing it in to where we have a proactive way of saying, when we feel passionately about something, what does it look like? What do we, what will support building trust, finding solutions, addressing those concerns you feel passionately about? Counselor Drabkin, Counselor Geary, Counselor Manke, all of us feel passionately about it. What's the right path for that that does build trust, right? So go ahead, Counselor Drabkin.
Thank you. I think it just reminded me and the, you know, I've already mentioned the, taking this time and that we have this shared goal of service. And then I hesitate to bring this up so early on, so soon after having these conversations, but because I did have this conversation with everybody, I really expressed that my goal is to help create council unity and that that is a participatory goal. It's not something that I can do by myself. And I think as we move through this conversation, I would really ask every counselor here to be very thoughtful in their words moving forward, keeping in mind that that goal of council unity is something that we can only achieve together. And so to please speak respectfully to one another as we move through this, even if you have hard truths to speak. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
And just in case in point, to kind of go along with all of this, it was almost two years ago at an LOC conference that Wendy, Kelly and myself met and we started talking about traction. And we talked about the high-functioning team and the elements of a high-functioning team. So this was two years ago. Okay, we've had a lot of changes since then and it's been a process. We've used traction to help us with goal-setting, to get through what was a really difficult process for us because we weren't communicating, we weren't high-functioning at that time. So I think, Remy, you're absolutely right. This is something that's been worked on for quite a while and it's the process that we need to understand. And I would submit, just like Remy, you know, I enjoy working with each and every one of you. We are all different. We bring different skill sets, but we're there because we love this community and we want to serve.
Okay, so we, Counselor Geary.
So what question are we trying to solve? Is it, is there, is there something broken and do we need to talk about if it's broken for reals? And if so, if it's broken, we all decided it's broken, we need to fix it? So what are we, is the question, is there a safe place to talk about how bad the city is or not? Or is it, was the process broken? And I guess what's, now I've lost the question.
So you are exactly where you should be on IDS. I was just going to encapsulate the issues that I've heard come up. And one that keeps, continue, continues to come up is the process question, that there was a process followed with regards to expressing concern by one of the counselors that didn't produce an optimal result for the whole team. And so this is an opportunity for us to talk about that in depth and what we need to, what we need to do about that to create a different outcome going forward. That's what I'm hearing coming out of the dialogue. So this is why I said we're gonna spend some time on the issue because everybody needs to agree on what the issue is that we're then gonna move into discussion and solution on. But your question, if you want to take a stab at encapsulating what you think the issue is, then we can add it to the notes. And then we're gonna, we're going to try to have one statement that identifies at least the most critical issue that we think we need to talk about involved in this. That's part of, part of having a successful IDS is getting the right issue to talk about. And that sometimes does take some time. We've unpacked a lot of different things. Emotions may be a result of the core issue of a process being followed. The process not being defined that produces, that enables a counselor to express an opinion about something that's happening with the city in a way that builds trust and in a way that enhances our ability to address it. That might produce an ancillary problem, which is emotional reaction and reduced trust, but that's not the root cause. You see what I'm saying, Zach? So we're trying to get to the root cause. What's the root cause here? Think about it a little bit and I want to hear from you again. What do you think the root cause is that we should be talking about that's gonna produce the solution to what we're, what we experience, are experiencing? Counselor Chenoweth?
Remy's hand was actually up before me.
I'm sorry, Counselor Drabkin.
I'm sorry, and this might be a little left fielder that has staff not loving me, but I am going to throw out that perhaps part of the process that's missing is our onboarding process. That perhaps had I ever said to Counselor Chenoweth, if you have issues with the council or with the city, please come to the mayor and I and discuss ways to vet them. Perhaps that's the issue.
Yeah. The lack of an onboarding process. Lack of an onboarding process. Okay, Counselor Chenoweth?
All of this is non sequitur to me, just in listening to it. It's totally non sequitur. I can't imagine that there's a single member of the council that at some point in time hasn't talked to a member of a constituency that is passionately close to them, whether, whether, you know, I'm not gonna go through the constituencies, but I just can't imagine that they haven't encouraged some constituency to advocate on behalf of them. To me, this is kind of puzzling to me because that's part of, you know, I've gone to city council meetings probably for the last, what, two years? And I can't tell you the number of times I've heard different council members say, where were you when we were in the process of discussing this? It's too late now. The, now I'm being told that when I advocated and encouraged somebody to be here in the process, I shouldn't have done that. That doesn't make logical sense to me. This wasn't about, again, to me, it wasn't about attacking anybody in the city. I mean, I understand that for some, when I say I don't consider our city to be a business-friendly city, I don't. I'm sorry, I just don't. And that's not meant as an attack. That's meant as just an observation of the policies that we have taken place, particularly since 2017. If that's a surprise to somebody, I've been saying that in campaigns, in everything I've said at every level, this is nothing new coming from me. So to me, the email itself, again, to me, the issue is that should never have been shared or we wouldn't even be here. And I'll just caution each one of you, you could be next.
Oh, can we, I think, I think we're starting to converge around an issue that we then can go, we can go deeper into discussion, which I think is where you're going, Counselor Chenoweth, which is you have a, you have a different idea about what is the process that will produce the best results for the city council when a counselor feels passionately that there's something we need to work on? Right? That there's something that needs to be addressed? That's what you're saying is that other people in the city council may have that same situation come up and you're saying that it is, it's, it is not a problem necessarily how you brought it up, but that's the conversation, I think. So let's try to capture the issue. I'm gonna try to write it. I think the opportunity here is establishing a process that identifies clearly, agreed-upon process. That's, that's the hard word, agreed-upon by across the team, that identifies how to, how to bring up issues that need, that that counselor feels feels needs to be solved. Or is the subpar, or you guys can wordsmith it. Maybe I should share my screen here because it's really important that we get an issue that you guys feel comfortable, that we're then gonna go deeper into working on that specifically. Hold on, I'm gonna share a screen for just a minute so that you guys can give me feedback on exactly what issue we're solving. So here's the sentence that I started with. So we agree, we're agreeing, agreeing that a process is missing, that we're not in agreement on the process. A process was solved that created dissatisfaction among some members of our staff and city manager and city council. Yet it's not a problem that city counselors see things that they want to have addressed, that they want to address and they function in community. So establishing what the expectation is around that and how we channel that energy is what we're looking for here. So comments on the issue and then we'll move into discussion. And I can't see. Any, do we feel like this issue is capturing what we want to go into discussion on then? Or no? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, from my perspective, I, you know, this discussion, we've been kind of all around things, but I think it really does narrow down because I can remember over the last three, four years of each counselor not knowing the process of how to getting things that they're concerned about in front of a busy schedule that's already in front of us. And especially when we didn't have the very specifics of goals, it was kind of like it was a free-for-all. Now that we have goals, I think we've come together in a certain fashion about the direction we need to go. But like I say, I think you've hit upon a real, a real issue that has been shared by many on this call of how is the process to get the things I'm concerned about in front of the council to have a good conversation and a learning experience from?
In front of the council. Have a good conversation and learning experience from. You captured it better than I did, Mr. Mayor. So.
Can you fix the spelling of my name?
I don't want to stop screen sharing until. Oh my gosh, where did I put it?
Just the next one down under discuss. That's just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. The problem with taking notes in front of the whole world. You have a typo too, though. Thank you for that. So do we feel comfortable that if we IDS this as the primary thing we're gonna be talking about, that we will connect with the most important aspects? Go ahead, Counselor Geary.
I think the only thing that is also on the fringe of being a real issue, and I'm not sure it's solvable because it's sort of, or solvable by group talking, is the treatment of staff, which I think was a real flagrant violation in this, whatever this is, was just pretty rude and disrespectful. And I don't know how you try and group solve a professional disrespect at that level. And so it seems that that is a very big tangible issue to talk about in that and try and work towards a solution of. I don't know if it's how you lump it in this and group talk it, so.
Yeah. Well, so I think that is another, another issue. Like I said, there can be more than one. So let's establish that we, do we agree that this is one issue that Scott really did a better job of describing? And then do we want to try to encapsulate, is this a second issue that we can identify? It would be a separate IDS that we could talk about specifically, which is respectful treatment of staff?
Absolutely.
Conversation in how we behave?
And Wendy?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor, let's talk about this issue.
I don't want to expand that second one, but I also think that in times past, we've not been respectful to counselors. Now, I think we've tried to address it in, in roundabout ways, but when, when we go to an IDS, we're getting right to the real issues and we get that on the table. So that may be a third one. I don't see that happening as often today, but it has been a problem within the last year.
Okay. So you'd like to do a third one, respectful treatment among the council? Respectful behavior among the council?
Well, I think that maybe a discussion around being respectful to staff could be the same principles that are utilized for respect with one another.
Okay, so respectful behavior. Go ahead, Remy.
I'm sorry, could we, could we say respectful communication?
Yeah.
Respectful communication in the team, both communication modeled by all among city counselors and between city council and staff.
I mean, I would, I don't like to put limits on respectful communication.
Yeah.
And all, okay. City council models respectful communication in all aspects.
I think two and three can be summarized in respectful communication.
Yeah.
Communication. Okay, let's do that. Respectful communication from city council, counselors. And that's with anyone that the city council interacts with. And then these are some of the comments on that. Okay? And I, I'm gonna delete that. You're not, and I'm gonna say to put it in the form of an issue, we need to work on modeling respectful communication as counselors, as city counselors. Okay, so with those two, do we think we have? With those two, sorry, guys. With those two, do we think we have captured the primary things that we would need to talk about in an IDS? So the first one we have is that we feel like, I'm gonna use Scott's. It has been a problem for a while, the counselors don't know how to get the things that the counselor is concerned about from the council to have a good conversation and learning experience from. So we need a better process for that. And the second one is we need to establish that the city council at all times is modeling respectful communication with staff, among city counselors, with citizens. Sorry. Any, any other issues? Any other issues we need to capture?
I would love to hear from Counselor Chenoweth and Counselor Geary since they've already commented to see if this feels on point.
Good to hear. It doesn't really address my concern at all, but you know, that's not to be terribly surprising.
Does Counselor Urban here? I feel like it misses the mark a little bit on kind of what got us here. I, I do agree that part of it would be solved by what Mayor Hill proposed. And I do feel, I have felt that over, over my first term, so I'm definitely in favor of working.
I have felt that over, over my first term, so I'm definitely in favor of working through that issue, and I've definitely heard that from other councillors as well. So I definitely think that's a great thing to work through and of the things on the table. I mean, that's, I think would solve some of it and would also help with just better discourse through councillors and staff and back and forth between all of us. But I still think the point that Chris was making, that he wants to be able to, or we all want to be able to make sure people are in tune and able, willing and appeased of the time that is appropriate to come, state their case on any policy decisions that we have coming before us is, I don't believe any of the two issues we have currently on the table kind of hit that mark for him or give strict direction on, on what is okay and what isn't okay in that aspect moving forward. And Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of what I've heard through this meeting.
I think you're, I think you're on point. I got two concerns. I mean, the, the number one is all I was doing was asking for advocacy, right? There was no intent, and if, if any member of the city was, was hurt by my comments, I'm sincerely sorry, there was no intent to hurt anybody. There was no intent to even put anybody down. So it's, it's, it's shocking to me or surprising, shocking is too strong of a word. It's, I understand in this group of people, this is how some of this was received. But again, I've talked to more folks besides this group and people that received the email who didn't receive it in the tone or context that was received by people here. I understand it was hurtful, so I'm going to have to work better on my verbiage. Thank you, Councillor Menke, for pointing that out. I'll have to work better on the verbiage as I'm trying to encourage advocacy, but I'm not asked, there was no intent here to try to get a conversation going at the city council level, which is what Mayor Hill was pointing to. That wasn't the intent. The intent was to try to encourage people to show up and advocate, and that's part of, I feel like, our role. I mean, we, we want the citizens to be engaged, or at least we claim to.
You did it by defaming the rest of us, Chris. I mean, I think that's my biggest complaint, and I know that you claim that that wasn't your intent, but that's how basically everybody else in the council received it. And I, I just don't buy the explanation that you didn't know what you were doing. So I think it's great to get people to turn out. I think it's great to encourage participation. I think all of us try to do that, but you can do it without going out of your way to criticize the entirety of your colleagues and the entirety of the city staff. And if that wasn't your intent, you're very good with language, Chris, so I just, I just don't believe that you didn't know what you were saying and what the intent was. And I guess I'm a little, you know, troubled, but it seems to me that your biggest concern here is that you weren't able to defame the rest of us and keep it private. And, and you flat out said that you would fire the city manager if he were your direct report, and I feel like that creates a hostile work environment. I guess I'm frustrated with Wendy and Remy and some of the others for not just being more direct about saying that I'm concerned, you know, my initial concern was that you were not targeting Jeff, who's a direct report, but that you were creating a hostile work environment for people who don't report to us, which is not lawful. So, you know, I mean, you can say whatever you want to people, and I understand that you're going to do that, but, you know, when we joined the council, every one of us, you know, were presented with an opportunity to sign a conduct agreement, and everyone except you chose to sign it. And, you know, that to me tells me that you want, you know, more license to be critical. And I agree with you, I don't think that this process is really going to solve that because I don't think it's going to change, I mean, you know, unless you're willing to not use those opportunities to defame the organization or the rest of us, then anything else that we do, we're just, the rest of us are just negotiating with each other, basically, you know, on, on, on rules that we all will agree to, but that so far you haven't been willing to be bound by. So I guess that's where I leave it. I guess as far as the business-friendly, whatever, I mean, that's your, you know, you're entitled to your opinion. I'll just say every other person on this council is a business owner, and I'm a business lobbyist. So, you know, we might not fit your narrow vision of what business-friendly means, but, you know, the idea that, that all of us don't have business and economic interests at heart, in my opinion, is false. So from my point of view, I think we just need to decide, are we going to agree as a group to a code of conduct and, and adhere to that moving forward in terms of how we treat each other or we not? And if we don't, then I think we're, you know, not going to have a high-functioning body and we're not going to have the unanimity that, that is so important to Council President Trappkin. I mean, I will tell you that from my part, you know, I, I will do the minimum engagement with you, Chris, to discharge our jobs because I just don't feel I can trust you. You've made too many false statements about different things and allowed people to have false understandings about things, like whether it's the, the air quality monitoring station last year that I felt like you, you know, misled the community about what that was and then didn't correct that misinterpretation when you kind of let people believe that it was a smog station.
Is this going to be an ongoing slander session?
Well, I have not had a chance, I have not said, I have not said a word, I have not said a word in this session. Excuse me, I have the floor, Chris, I would like to finish what I'm saying. So anyway, so, so to that point, I, it would be very difficult, the point I was trying to make, it'd be very difficult for us to build the kind of trust that would lead to a high-functioning team because I just don't think you're going to change the behavior. And I hope I'm proved wrong by that.
Okay.
We have, Wendy, two more minutes before I think we need to.
Yeah. So, so Councillor Drapkin, do you have something quick? And then what I would love to do is I have inked four issues. I tried to get a couple of the issues brought up by Councillor Chenoweth and Councillor Peralta, and if we can agree to move forward on these issues, then they will carry to, we will have IDSs on those issues. Remy, did you want to say something quickly before we review those?
No, thank you, I was going to give an example and the opposite, not necessary at this time.
Okay. So one of the things that we have to be careful about, that I know that there will be some things for us to work through personally, what we're going to try to do is, is address issues that are the root of what's happening so that we can come together and find solutions, even if, when we have differences of opinion of how we get there. So I think one of the things that Councillor Chenoweth was feeling, Councillor Peralta, is if we get too personal, then it inflames emotions and it actually goes against us being able, if somebody feels attacked, it goes against us being able to find solutions together. So we're going to have to be care, even when we have strong feelings about something, it's helpful for us to be really respectful of the person and try to address what is causing those emotions that we might all be able to work together on solving. So that's one thing we'll be working on in future meetings. And I, I will review quickly, I know it's six, I'll review quickly these, and I want to get a thumbs up on these being, moving forward and that we're going to be working on these four issues, if you guys agree. So the first one is the process one that we talked about first, that there, it would be helpful for us to have a process for us to gather to, for us to be able to identify issues in a way that gives good conversation and learning experience for the team. We'll wordsmith that outside of this meeting if we agree that process work being done to enable a councillor that has a strong feeling that should be brought up to the whole council, how they do that in agreement and communication that's clear about that should be a topic of an IDS. Everybody feel comfortable with that? You guys can give thumbs up or no?
I'd say communicating the process. Could we say communicating the process? We have, we do have a process. Clarifying process.
Clearly. Clarifying and communicating. Yeah, and I'll wordsmith this, we'll wordsmith this on the advisory team and bring it back. Communicating the process clearly. Okay, so good on that? Okay, I don't see responses from everybody. Okay. Yeah, Scott's good on it, okay. The second one is respectful communication at city councillors. This might be tied into the lack of a shared code of conduct. Okay, Sal, you're good on the first one? Okay, thank you. All right. And I'm almost wondering if these two could be in the same IDS because part of the code of conduct probably should be how we're communicating with each other and outside of each other, so maybe I can put two shared, lack of a shared code of conduct and that would like the code of conduct to address respectful communication. Good on that one? So we're solving a shared code of conduct that we all agree to and that the respectful communication will be a part of that code of conduct. Okay. Good, okay. And then how, and I added this one because it seems like there is a question of outside, outside of when you're functioning within the community and you, what is the right role of the city council to be able to talk to citizens? That was something that Councillor Chenoweth said that there might be, we might need to come to an agreement on the city council, what is a healthy way to do that? This was one we didn't have a lot of discussion about as a team. Go ahead, Councillor Drapkin.
Well, I just feel like this goes back to process and this was the example I was going to give before, and I know we have about 30 seconds, but I'll tell you that years ago, the Zero Waste came to me and they asked me if I would be their advocate on a bag ban, and what I said back to them was that they needed to come to us to request either a work session or a public comment to bring the issue before the council as a whole so that we could decide as a body if that was an approach we wanted to take. So I, I do feel like, again, we do have a process and that includes advocating for constituents that are bringing issues to you.
Okay. Advocating for constituents.
Yeah, so I feel like there's some redundancy in these. I feel like it's.
Okay.
How to advocate is wrapped up in the process and understanding the process.
So Wendy, could we, could we send, Wendy, could we send these out and, and maybe have a week to look at it and get them back to you? It's seven o'clock right now, so we've got others waiting.
Yep.
And then we'll bypass.
And we'll clean this.
Go ahead.
That's fine. And we will clean this up and get it out to everybody and maybe we can collect more feedback from that and then we'll roll it into a future, next Level 10 meeting, the results of our, our identified.
Thank you, Wendy, for leading us through that. Thank you, councillors, for being open in your communication. We'll move now over to our regular Zoom meeting for city council. Thank you all.
Thank you.